Welcome to the April 12th Lakeville Board of Selectmen meeting. In accordance with the Governor's order suspending certain provisions of the Open Meeting Law, General Law, Chapter 30A, Section 20 relating to the 2020 coronavirus outbreak emergency, the April 12th, 2021 public meeting of the Board of Selectmen shall be physically closed to the public to avoid group congregation. However, to view this meeting in progress, please go to facebook.com backslash lake cam. You do not need a Facebook account to view the meeting. This meeting will be recorded and available to be viewed at a later date. As a preliminary matter, my name is Leah Fabian, Chairman of the Lakeville Board of Selectmen. Permit me to confirm that all members, staff, and persons anticipated on the agenda are present and can hear me. Tracy Craig McGee.
Here.
Thank you. Lorraine Carboni, Selectman Lorraine Carboni.
Yeah.
And Selectman Rich LaCamera.
Here.
All right. That was it, right? I think I read it all. Okay, so first, second agenda item here, we have Selectmen's announcements. I don't know, Rich or Tracy, if you have any announcements?
Madam Chair.
Yeah.
I'd just like to mention again that we now have 65 active cases, COVID-19 active cases. That's a 50% increase in two weeks. Just to reinforce, as we say at every meeting, everybody's got to continue to wear their masks and protect themselves. It's very, very important. We expect another increase, you know, coming up. We've been in red now for two weeks and it's extremely important that we try to make sure that everybody gets protected.
Stay diligent. I agree. Anything else, Rich?
No, I'll sit.
Okay, Lorraine? Anything?
Nothing on my side.
Okay. Tracy, anything else that?
I'm all set.
Okay. All right, moving right along here. So, we need to discuss scheduling the special town meeting for May 10th at 6:30 PM. As we know, we have our annual town meeting that is scheduled for May 10th at, I believe, 7 o'clock. So, um, we need to schedule this one. Do we need to? Make a motion?
I make a motion that we schedule the special town meeting for May 10th, 2021 at 6:30 PM.
Second on the motion?
Second.
Okay. Any discussion? Okay.
I have a quick, yeah, I just have a quick question. Is there any reason why when we schedule the annual town meeting, because we typically always have a special town meeting, is there any reason why we can't schedule the special at the same time?
We are. We're having a special before the annual.
Correct. But I mean, when we schedule, would vote to have an annual town meeting at that time, can we vote to schedule the special as well?
We usually don't. And because usually, we may or may not require a special time meeting. The only reason why we're requiring a special time meeting is because we need to do some transfers and to pay some unpaid bills from previous year.
Well.
Yeah. So basically what you're saying is, so like next year, when we're thinking about doing the annual town meeting, we just look at doing them both at the same time?
Yeah, yeah, okay. Pretty much. I've never not known us to not have a special.
Yeah. Last year, of course, was different, but we did the annual first and then the special after it. So, I think, I don't know. I don't remember everything. But anyways, okay, all those in favor?
Carboni, I.
LaCamera, I.
Fabian, I. So.
I make a motion to, to close the special time meeting warrant on April 12th, 2021.
Well, we have to vote to open it first.
And we just did.
We voted to hold the, to schedule the special town meeting. We didn't vote to open it.
Okay.
Yeah.
I'll make a motion to vote to open the warrant for the special time meeting of May 10th, 2021, and vote to close the special time meeting warrant on April 12th, 2021.
I'll second the motion.
Discussion? More May 10th. I'm just reading this, May 10th. Okay. All right, all those in favor?
Carboni, I.
LaCamera, I.
Fabian, I. All right, um, next, we have review and vote to approve the warrant articles for the special town meeting and vote to approve the final warrant for special town meeting, May 10th, 2021. So, I think everyone has this in their packet with the transfers. Tracy, do we need to read them all?
You can, you want.
Okay. Uh, volunteers?
Yeah, I make a motion to place the following articles on the special time, May 10th, special time meeting. Article 1, see if the town will vote to transfer the sum of $6,231.26 from free cash following unpaid bills from the prior fiscal year or take any action there, too. Article 2, see if the town will vote to transfer $80,000 for free cash supplement, the appropriations stated below that were previously voted in Article 6 of the June, 2023, 23, 20, June 23rd, 2020, annual time meeting for fiscal year beginning July 20th, July 1st, 2020, for various departments to take any action in relation there, too. Article number 3, see if the town will vote to transfer unused balances for capital projects identified below the sum of $105,000 from overlay surplus, sum of $100,000 for the total transfer of $205,000, capital projects stated below, and anything incidental related there, too, including but not limited to purchase, installation of furniture, equipment, supplies, or take any other action in relation there, too. Article 4, see if the town will vote to amend, to amend the vote taken to the pursuant to the Article 7 of the June 23rd, 2020 annual town meeting relative to the Park Commission Enterprise Fund fiscal year beginning July 20th, 2020, to change the funding source by reducing estimated park receipts by $45,000 and replacing it with $45,000 from park retained earnings or take any action in relation there, too.
I'll second the motion.
Any discussion on that?
I just have one. On article number 3, this is all for the fiscal year 2021 capital projects, correct? This is just, we're transferring 105 from the unused balances over to another item, correct?
Yeah. The reason why we're doing it now is because we do it the special time meeting, those funds would be available right away to do these projects. If we waited to July 1 and the projects couldn't be started till after July 1 because of funding.
Right. I just wanted to confirm that this was for fiscal year 21.
Yep.
Okay.
Okay. All those in favor?
Carboni, I.
LaCamera, I.
Fabian, I. All right. Agenda item number 6. So, this is the final draft warrant reviewed by Town Council and revised. So, the board will need to vote to approve warrant articles 1 through 10 and place them on the annual town meeting warrant for May 10th, 2021. Do we have to read them all? I don't think we have to.
Madam Chair?
Yep.
Um, if we could just go back to the last article.
Yeah.
The warrant articles, did the vote include to approve the special town meeting warrant as presented?
No.
Okay, so we need to vote on the, the actual warrant as presented to approve it.
Rich, do you want to amend your motion?
Review and vote to approve warrant articles for special town meeting and vote to approve the final warrant. Okay.
So moved.
So, we voted on the first one, or do you want to just change the motion, Rich?
We voted each individual article to put on, to put on the warrant. Now we're.
Just as presented.
Yeah, as reviewed. Well, it's, it's broken up into two things on the agenda. It says, correct. Yeah, and vote to approve the warrant articles for special town meeting and vote to approve the final warrant for special town meeting, May 10th, 2021.
All right. I can make that motion that we vote to approve the special town meeting warrant for May 10th, 2021, as presented.
Second.
All those in favor?
Carboni, I.
LaCamera, I.
Okay. So now, on number, I'll set Tracy then?
Thank you.
Okay. So now, we're moving on to the final warrant for town meeting.
I can make that motion to approve the warrant articles 1 through 10 and place them on the annual town meeting warrant for May 10th, 2021.
I'll second that motion, but I think that the warrant article should be read, read into the minutes.
Okay. Yeah, I kind of think we should read them. And do we want to split them up, or does the one person have to, making the motion, have to read them all?
You don't have to read, all you have to do is, you don't have to read all the financial information. You just have to read the wording of the article to be placed on. So.
Okay.
I don't know, whoever wants to do it, it's fine with me.
Lorraine, do you want to do it, or?
I'll start. I'll start until I run out of voice. Okay, so Article 1, to see if the town will vote to determine the salaries of all elected officers and to raise and appropriate and/or transfer from available funds, set sums of money as may be necessary to defray town expenses for the fiscal period, July 1st, 2021, to June 30th, 2022, inclusive, said sums to be allocated in accordance with the budget document to be presented at town meeting and to make appropriation or take any other action relative there, too. Article 2, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate and/or transfer from available funds such sums of money as may be necessary to operate the Park Department for the fiscal period, July 1st, 2021, to June 30th, 2022, inclusive, and to make appropriation or take any other action relative there, too. Article 3, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate and/or transfer from available funds, set sums of money as may be necessary to operate the landfill transfer station for the fiscal period, July 1st, 2021, to June 30th, 2022, inclusive, and to make appropriation or any other action relative to. Article 4, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate, transfer from available funds, borrow or otherwise provide a sum of money for capital improvements and equipment and all costs incidental or relative thereto, and to authorize town officials to take such action and execute all documents as may be necessary to effectuate the purposes of this vote or take any action relative there, too. Article 5, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate and/or transfer from available funds, a sum of money for the purpose of adding to the debt service, capital project stabilization fund pursuant to the provisions of Mass. General Law, Chapter 40, Section 5B, or take any action relative there, too. Article 6, to see if the town will vote to amend the town's general bylaws by adding the following new section titled "Right to Farm" bylaw and authorize the town clerk to assign such numbering as is appropriate to bring said bylaw into conformance with the existing codification or take any action relative there, too. I shouldn't have to read the rest of this, correct?
No.
Okay. That'll, thank you. All right. Okay, Article 7, to see if the town will vote to amend the Lakeville zoning bylaw subsection 3.2.3, establishment of districts, the floodplain protection district as set forth below with the additions shown in underlined slash highlighted and deletions shown in strike through, and amend the Lakeville zoning bylaw, Section 7.1, floodplain district regulations, including amendments and deletions to subsection 7.1.3, definitions as set forth below with additions shown in underlined slash highlighted and deletion, deletions shown in strike through, and the addition of subsection 7.1.7, administration, including subsections 7.1, 7.1 through 7.1.7.11, as set forth below and shown in underlined slash highlighted, or take any action relative there, too. Almost there. Okay, Article 8, see if the town will vote to amend the Lakeville zoning bylaw, Section 6.7, point, procedure, business or industrial as shown below with additions shown in underlined slash highlighted and deletion shown in strike through, or take any act, other action relative there, too. All right, Article 9, I guess I'll have to read this whole thing. Okay, Article 9, submitted by petition, vote to accept Mass. General Law, Chapter 140, Section 139C, into town of Lakeville bylaws. Section 139A, the fee for license shall accept as otherwise provided by determined by a city or town, provided however that no fee shall be increased without a majority vote of the city or town council or the voters present at town meeting. B, the license fee for a spayed or neutered dog shall be less than the license fee for it, for an intact dog. Upon application for a license, a city or town clerk shall require a certificate from the veterinarian who spayed or neutered the dog as proof that the dog is spayed or neutered, provided however that if the city or town clerk is satisfied that the certificate of the veterinarian who spayed or neutered the dog cannot be obtained, the clerk may instead accept a receipt of a bill from the veterinarian who performed such procedure or a statement signed under the penalties of perjury by a veterinarian registered and practicing in the Commonwealth, describing the dog and stating that the veterinarian has examined the dog, which appears to have been spayed or neutered and incapable of propagation. C, no fee shall be charged for license issued under the section for a service animal as defined by the Americans with Disabilities Act or regulations promulgated thereunder. No fee shall be charged for a license for a dog owned by a person aged 70 years or over in a city or town that accepts this provision. No license fee or portion thereof shall be refunded because of the subsequent death, loss, spaying, or removal from the Commonwealth or other disposal of the dog, nor shall a license fee or a portion thereof paid by mistake be paid or recovered after it's been paid over to a city or town under Section 147.
And just to be noted, for the record, it's submitted by petition.
Yes. All right. Somebody else want to, the last one, it's a couple pages.
Well, we don't have to read the whole thing because if the first paragraph spells out.
Okay. All right. So Article 10, which is also submitted by petition. Will the town of Lakeville consider removing the Developmental Opportunities District bylaw from the town of Lakeville zoning bylaws, Section 7.9.1-7.9.6, which was adopted June 4th, 2012, at the annual town meeting, approved by Attorney General, July 18th, 2012, and then the rest?
Second that motion.
All right. Any discussion?
I have none.
Rich, anything?
No, I'll sit. Thanks.
Okay. And just for anyone watching, all these will be available on the website and at town meeting. Okay, all those in favor?
Lorraine, Carboni, I.
Okay, I heard Carboni, I.
LaCamera, I.
Fabian, I. Thanks, Lorraine, for reading those.
I make a motion to approve the annual town meeting warrant for May 10th, 2021, as presented.
I'll second the motion.
Any discussion? All right, all those in favor?
Carboni, I.
LaCamera, I.
Fabian, I. All right, next on the agenda is the other reorganization things that we just didn't finish up last week. So, so we did a couple. What we have now is, we did the chairman, vice chairman. So, I don't know how we want to do this. The next one on the list is Director of Veteran Services. That's mine. I don't mind keeping that. Unless, Lorraine, you want that. Rich, I don't mind hanging on to it.
I'll make a motion, Leah Fabian is the Director of Veteran Services.
Second.
All those in favor?
Carboni, I.
LaCamera, I.
Fabian, I. Okay. Representative Plymouth County Advisory Board, I can keep that one, too.
I'll make a motion to, for Leah Fabian, Leah Fabian to be the representative of Plymouth County Advisory Board.
Second.
All those in favor?
Carboni, I.
LaCamera, I.
Fabian, I. I make, I step down his chair, make a motion to make Lorraine Carboni part of clerk.
I'll second that motion.
All, any conversation on that one? All those in favor?
Carboni, I.
Camera, I.
Fabian, I. All right. So the following of the current designated point persons for this. So, we have Selectman LaCamera as the budget. Union negotiations, which are done for a while. Regional Finance Committee and Staff Meeting Liaison.
I would like to make a recommendation, Madam Chairman.
Yep.
That I think that, you know, looking at some of these things, that we ought to discuss these with the new town administrator before we appoint people. The budget is okay. You know, we got to finish that up. The Regional Finance Committee usually don't do that till December anyways.
Yeah.
But in union negotiations, we don't have any union contracts for two years.
Right.
So that certainly doesn't have to be done. The School Department liaison really, you know, I mean, Brian really didn't do anything.
That's, that's everything but budget. So like if they wanted a, you know, so.
Up to you, but that's my recommendation, though.
Yeah, I think actually, one of the most important ones on here is the Park Department.
I agree.
So, I'd like to, you know, fill that one in. I don't mind giving that up, actually, if someone else wants it. If not, I'll, I'll keep it, but.
How often did you, were you involved, just basically attending their meetings?
Um, there was a lot of, because of the Loon Pond Lodge, we did a lot of meetings on stuff like that. But also, there's just been a lot of park stuff with, yeah, there's been a lot of work for the last year. You know, mostly because of their budget stuff and attending the meetings and just even talking to a couple of the Park Commissioners.
Hmm.
So, yeah. You know, I can, I can stay that. We can just leave it that way. Honestly, I think some of the stuff that, you know, should be done through the town administrator anyways, you know?
Are there, are there any initiatives other than the, the contract for Loon Pond Lodge that are ongoing right now that you've been involved in?
Um, there is like some programming. We were trying to, you know, have them write a new charge of what they want their mission to be, discuss some programming, you know, just now that we have the Highway Department taking care of the parks, it's like that frees up the commissioners' time and maybe they can be working on like, programming. So, you know, that's kind of one of the directions that we wanted to go with that. So.
Well, maybe we should wait till Ari gets here on the, you know, in May.
Yeah.
And just go, you know, we can have a meeting with him to kind of go over these a little bit.
Yeah, I think these ones are really relevant to the town administrator. So.
Okay.
Yep. Um, the other ones, too, the Capital Expenditures Committee, I mean, the Economic Development Committee, they're really, I tried to, so I've skipped down to the next section now. I tried to reach out to the Economic Development Committee just to get some, you know, feedback and there really wasn't, I only had one person respond. So, you know, so these, these, these need to be sort of relooked at. I've had several conversations with Nate Darling, the Building Commissioner, about Z-BRAC, whether, you know, what, what the use is of that. So again, I think some of these other ones, I think we, I really like the town administrator's input on, you know, what he feels.
Well, I'm interested. I know Brian had the three of them, the EDC, Economic Development Committee, the Energy Advisory, and the Emergency Planning. I mean, I'm happy to take those three on. I'm very familiar with the Energy Advisory, you know, as I sat in on them, you know, quite often. So, if it's, if it pleases the board, I would like to at least take those three on.
All right. So that's economic development.
Mm-hmm.
Energy Advisory.
Yes, and then the Emergency Planning.
Planning. Yeah. Well, I mean, you, you had worked on the MVP, so.
Yep.
That's not emergency, but still.
Right.
So moved.
Okay. So, I will step down and second Lorraine for Economic Development Committee, Energy Advisory Committee, and Emergency Planning Committee. Any conversation? All right, all those in favor?
Carboni, I.
LaCamera, I.
Fabian, I. Baby and I.
Madam Chairman, just so you know, the Police Station Building Committee will be disbanded as of July thirty-first. The Project Review Forty-three D Committee will be disbanded as well, because the Lakeville Hospital project, you know, has been, has been approved, and there's, there's no other, there's no other property in town that comes under forty-three D.
Yeah, okay. All right, so we'll just address those. All right, and we'll leave Z Brack alone for now too. Okay, so number eight is revisit the Taunton Water Connection Application for the property located at forty-eight, forty-three Main Street. So we had, Lorraine, for your, for your information, we had discussed this a couple of, I don't know, maybe two meetings ago, so a month ago, but we tabled it. Because the, we, the ownership we knew could potentially be changing.
Yep.
So, I, I did just have a question, I know what it says on the paper in front of me, but the owner's name is Lakeville Owner LLC.
That is correct, they have formed a new company, Rhino has formed a new company called Lakeville Owner LLC for the former Lakeville Hospital property.
Okay.
Is there, I mean, just looking at this, is there a name that we can associate with this application other than, you know, if we were to call, or if somebody were to call?
Tyler Murphy, right on the bottom.
Tyler Murphy, he's part of Rhino, yeah, yeah. Okay, so.
I make a motion to approve the water connection application for Lakeville Owner LLC for six thousand forty-five gallons of water, and to be used for a commercial property only.
At forty-three Main Street?
Yep.
All right, I'll second the motion.
Okay, any discussion on this?
Excuse me, Madam Chairman.
Yep.
And amend that to have the, the Chairman of the Board sign the application.
Oh, okay. You got that, Tracy? Okay, thanks. All right, any discussion on this? All right, all those in favor?
Carboni, I.
The camera, I.
Baby and I. All right, I'm just, I don't see any chats going on, I'm still not used to checking that, so. So now we have this agenda item number nine, which is to discuss and possibly vote to authorize the Chair to sign the amendment to the Affordable Housing Restriction Agreement for the residences at Nemasket River. So as I was going through this, I wasn't, I didn't have a copy of the original, but I know they, did they just get finished with the planning board?
Yes, they did.
Anyone know?
They modified it, because we had asked them that, they were trying to set it, change them to rental units, if you recall.
Yep.
Planning Board held a meeting and voted to rescind their vote of rentals for sale. So that, that was done, and then there was a, I believe, a twenty-day waiting period, and that waiting period has expired.
Okay, and this has been reviewed by Town Council, correct?
It has.
Okay, it's just I don't have the other one, so I, I don't think to do the comparing. We don't have Attorney Shaughnessy, no?
He's, he's here.
Oh, he is here, okay.
I'm, I'm just here to answer any questions, Tracy said that Amy Questle reviewed it for the Board, and I think it's all good.
Okay, did you have any other comments or anything on it, or?
No, Mr. LaCamera was correct, there was an amendment with the, the Planning Board that the twenty days period expires today, I believe, so I'd ask the Board to sign this agreement, and I'll record the amendment as well as that amendment to the decision all at once, and I'll get the Board a copy.
Okay, I'll entertain a motion to authorize the Chair to sign the amendment to the Affordable Housing Restriction Agreement for the residences at Nemasket River.
Oh, move.
A second.
Any discussion?
Just, I mean, I know that we received the letter January seventh, twenty twenty-one. Is there any reason other than it going through the Planning Board for hearing, and it's taken this long for us to come in front of us?
As Mr. Shaughnessy said, it had to go back to the Planning Board, and the Planning Board held the hearing, but it wasn't held up, it was just a process that they had to follow.
Plus then Council reviewed it too. Okay, any other discussion? All those in favor?
Carboni, I.
The camera, I.
Baby and I.
Madam Chair?
Yep.
Procedurally, you can file this at the Town Clerk's office, and I can grab everything at once, or just to, I'll logistically help, how can I get a signed document?
I thought in your letter, you said if we could send you one?
That, that, that's fine, if you want to drop it in the mail, whatever's, whatever's the easiest way, I don't mind coming down to Town Hall and picking it up.
Okay. Yeah, because right, I thought in the letter it said I would ask that the document be notarized and have it returned to my office. So Tracy, is that how we want to handle this?
Sure, as soon as you come in to sign, I can notarize it, and then I can call Mike, and if he wants to come pick it up, I can meet him at the door, or I can drop it in the mail, whatever he wants.
Okay.
Yeah, that works.
Okay, I'll go back tomorrow to sign it.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Yep, thank you.
Good night.
Joining us, yep. Okay, next we have agenda item number ten. Discuss the request from the Animal Control Officer to carry over eighty hours of vacation time and to buy back forty hours from FY twenty-one. And attached is a memo from the Animal Control Officer. My only question here that I had was, I thought that, I, I don't know how many hours he has, but I thought that some of the carryovers from, do we know if the carryovers from last year were used before we added the carryovers from this year? It's a little confusing.
If you, if you remember, Madam Chairman, the Board voted to allow a carryover besides the normal forty-hour-a-week carryover.
Yeah.
We allowed them to carry an extra week carryover.
Right.
Had to use it within a certain period of time.
Yeah, I think it was within the first six months.
And if they didn't want to do that, then we had a buyback program for those forty hours. We don't have a buyback program now. And we don't have funding for a buyback program.
Right, so that's why I'm kind of confused, and this is like the first, you know, I, I guess I'm just not comfortable voting on this one just yet until we can go through this, because I, I've already heard from a couple of employees who are asking me if we're going to roll anything over this year, and I can't speak for the Board, but I'm not inclined to do that. Last year, COVID nineteen made it very difficult for people to take vacations, that's why we made that, you know, consideration. So I don't know where the money comes from for the buyback in the budget.
We didn't budget for anything.
Right, so that's why I'm having a hard time, you know, seeing where we're gonna buy, where we're gonna get the money to buy it back, so.
Well, actually, there's, there's two requests here, one is for eighty hours, to carry over eighty hours, which we only allow one week.
Yeah.
The other is to buy back forty hours, so that's a hundred and twenty hours, you know, a buyback, I mean, I don't see how we do this.
Yeah.
Well, perhaps, Madam Chair, maybe we do a survey for the departments to see if other departments are in the same type of position with their, their managers. It's a difficult situation because of the COVID, and a lot of folks, you know, just couldn't take time or didn't take time, so. This might be more of a, an issue across the board that we might have to take a step back to address. I certainly don't want any of our staff to lose any time. But if this is something that's, you know, across the board, I mean, we, we really need to address this.
Yeah.
Madam Chair.
Yeah.
We're at the middle of April here, okay? If that was an issue, it should have been addressed months ago, not now. And we were very specific, excuse me, we were very specific that when we did it last year, we told the employees that you need to take your vacation time. They have repeatedly been told by their managers that they have to take their vacation, and they're allowed to carry forty hours over. And that's what was agreed to, and it's outlined in a very detailed metal, memo put together by the HR Director. And she's been following up on a regular basis to make sure that people take their vacation time.
Yeah, I know that, I talked to her too last week about this, even before I saw this about vacation time, and she said that she really has been making an effort to make sure, and I know some managers have too. So I just don't know how we spend the money that we didn't allocate for this, I guess that's my thing too.
Well, you got, you got two things here, you got wanting to carry over eighty hours, which is two weeks, we allow one week. And then on top of that, he wants, wants to buy back, wants us to buy back forty hours, that's a hundred and twenty, you know, hours, that's three weeks vacation time.
Yeah.
Right, well, I, I certainly don't want any, any staff to lose any of the time that they're due. But I would like to understand before we say no to anything that we just understand if this is something that is across the board, that's all.
And, you know, Lorraine, I, I share some of your concern, I, you know, however, I do know that we, when we did this last year, we put a lot of time and thought into it, and we said to folks, you know, we understand the, you know, considerations with vacation and not being able to go anywhere or do anything. So this is a, this is a tough one for me, because I feel like you do too, I think we should probably just table the discussion and at least get, you know, the Human Resource Director to weigh in to see, you know, but I'm not inclined to personally, again, it's only one vote, but we were very specific last year saying that we didn't want to, you know, roll overtime or do buybacks, I don't even, as far as I'm concerned, I don't think we do buybacks for, unless it's in someone's contract, right?
Well, I mean, if, depending on the department's situation, perhaps there were staff that were out that required the manager to step in, not allowing them to take their time, so we don't know based on, on this exactly what, what happened, so. I would recommend that we have our HR Director do a quick survey with the departments to find out what other situations may be similar to this, and then we address it at the next, you know, bring it up at the next meeting.
Yeah, and you know, traditionally, it usually happens to the folks that have the most time on the books, you know, not the folks that only have, just, you know, the newer employees. So at best, I, I think we table this for, until we can have more information on that one.
So Madam Chair, will you just connect with the?
Yep.
With HR?
Yeah. Yeah, I just want, I just want to make sure of the effort, and I know, you know, she says she has, but I just want to be sure. And also, I know some department heads too, they make their effort at, you know, quarterly intervals to make sure their folks are taking their time. But, you know, last year, we, we stressed that vacation time is supposed to, you know, you got to try to take it. All right, so let me just make a note there. All right, agenda item eleven, review the site plan for the property located at fifty-six Main Street for Domino's Pizza. All I'm gonna say about this is, it's a tight parking lot. I think the water hookup, Rich, do you know where the water hookup is, or Lorraine, I don't know if you know, is that Middleborough?
It would be Middleborough.
Yep, okay. I, other than saying it's a tight, it's a tight squeeze in there, I mean, I don't know if anyone else has anything they want to send to the Planning Board for.
Well, I know when I was supporting the Planning Board at the time, that the original plans had come in front of them. So the only thing right now that I believe, after touching base with Nate Darling, is that they'll have to file for a special permit for the drive-through. But other than that, I, I believe that the plans were for a small restaurant drive-through originally, so the Planning Board did their due diligence to make sure that there was plenty of clearance
Yeah.
for truck or vehicles coming through.
But even though, even though they were originally supposed to have a drive-through, they would have still had to have gone through the zoning board, right?
Correct, for a special permit.
Okay. Yeah, I, I don't really have a whole lot, Tracy, to send for this. Unless someone of the other selectmen has something specific, they want to put in a note to the Planning Board. Rich.
Okay. From what I can tell, going through this, the Locust Plan, this is just delivery and pickup, there's no restaurant here, from what I can tell. Did anybody else see anything different?
Oh, there's a restaurant.
I couldn't see how many seats.
I mean, how many what?
How many seats? I was just curious, I didn't, I didn't pick up on that.
It's not just, what, what, what they're talking about is a pickup, okay, it's not really a drive-through.
Yeah.
A lot of your pizza, and then you pick it up.
Right.
Yeah.
But it is a restaurant.
Okay, so then we don't, no one wants to put anything in a note to the Planning Board, correct?
I have no comments.
Okay. I have no comments, no comment, Rich?
Nope, I'll say.
Okay, all right. Next. All right, agenda item number twelve. Discuss the request from Serped Commission to appoint a selectman's member to nominate an at-large commissioner and nominate special recognition and commission awards. So that means we have to do three things, correct?
We don't, we don't have to.
We don't have to, but.
Well, if it pleases the Board, I'd be interested in being the representative of the, the Selectmen to Serpent.
I'm okay with that.
I don't want to be.
I know, I don't want to be either, so I'll step down his chair and make that motion to appoint Lorraine Carboni as the representative to Serped for the Selectmen.
Just clarification, Tracy? Tracy, please.
Yep.
Barbara Yankowski, is she representing the Planning Board?
She was last year, I don't know if they voted this year.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. All right, so you second that, Rich?
Yeah, second.
Okay, any discussion? All those in favor?
Carboni.
Okay, Carboni. The camera, was I, was that, that was I, right, Rich?
Yep.
And Fabian, I, okay, so. Next is to nominate an at-large commissioner. Do we need an at-large commissioner?
Most, my understanding is that there's, you know, each, each year at the Serpent Annual Meeting, there's a committee that will review any of the nominations that come, come through from the, each of the municipalities. I don't have anybody to.
Yeah, I don't have anyone.
Recommend at this time.
Yeah.
Madam Chair?
Yep.
The at-large commissioner is basically a representative of minority. The at-large commissioner is basically a representative of minority and low-income community groups. Um, and they have sub-areas, Attleboro, Fall River, New Bedford, and Taunton. We are part of the Taunton area. Um, right now, Janine Pacini from the Office of Economic and Community Development is serving as the Taunton. At-large Commissioner, so.
Yeah.
Um, that's what that one is.
Yeah, she's on the home consortium and everything too, so I don't necessarily think we need to do that. And then. If someone has a uh request for nominations, does anyone have a request for nominations for special recognition? I don't have any of that. I. No?
I have none.
No.
All right. Next, uh oh, where did my agenda go? Hold on. I literally lost my agenda. There it is. All right, item number thirteen. So discuss the reappointments of animal control officer and assistant animal control officers. So. Um, I will. Entertain a motion to make the following reappointments, all with terms to expire April thirtieth, twenty twenty-two. David Freitz, Animal Control Officer, Constable. Darcy Lee, Assistant Animal Control Officer, Jennifer Nash, Assistant Animal Control Officer, and Lisa Podioski, Assistant Animal Control Officer.
Second.
Madam Chair?
Yep.
You made your motion to include David Freitz, Animal Control Officer slash Constable.
She did say.
She did, okay, I'm sorry, I didn't hear it.
Yep, you said David Freitz, right?
Yes, only David.
Yep, okay. All right, so a, there was a so moved from Lorraine, a second from Rich. Any discussion? Okay, all those in favor?
Carboni I.
Uh, the camera I.
Fabian I. All right, um. Number fourteen, discuss, we received a letter from Jennifer Cipiora. Um, resigning from the Finance Committee. It says, Dear Board of Selectmen, please accept this letter as my official resignation from the Town of Lakeville Finance Committee. There are several personal situations going on in my life that prevent me from giving my time to this committee. I look forward to assisting the town in the future. Warmest regards. Dr. Jennifer Cipiora. So um, I'll entertain a. Motion to accept this resignation letter from Jennifer Cipiora from Finance Committee.
So moved.
Second.
Any conversation? All those in favor?
Carboni I.
Camera I.
Fabian I. All right. Uh, let's see, next we have.
Madam Chair?
Yep.
Uh, does the board want to um have the vacancy um advertised?
Uh, yes.
Um, actually, Madam Chair?
Yep, didn't we just? Go ahead.
Excuse me, Madam Chair, just so you know that there was a write-in. For uh two, two finance committee members, so that's not necessary because she retired, she resigned.
Prior.
Prior to the election, so the person that did the write-in. The two people that did the write-in will automatically get elected. It doesn't have to be advertised.
Yeah, her letter was March twenty-ninth, so the election was after that and in the results.
She resigned as of April fourth, too.
Yeah.
Madam Chair, though, we do still have a vacancy. We only have four members on the Finance Committee.
Even with the.
Yes, uh George Volopoulos did not run, Larry Con- Constant pulled papers but never returned them. So um Katie has taken one, Brian has taken another. Um, so we have Katie, Brian, Adam Lynch, and Darren Beals. We have one vacancy.
Katie, Brian, Adam Lynch.
And Darren Beals.
Beals.
Now, we have uh A- Adam Lynch, right?
Yeah.
Okay.
Brian, Katie, and Darren. Larry didn't return the nomination papers, George didn't run, and Jennifer resigned. So um Brian filled um say George's position and Katie filed and Katie filled Larry Constance's position, so Jennifer's is vacant.
Okay. So then I guess we do need to fill that. Because we should have five, correct?
Right.
Okay. Okay. Uh. Agenda item number fifteen, revisit the requests to have Sunken Island Bike Race on July tenth, twenty twenty-one, use Lakeville Roads. Um, I think the reason we had tabled this previously because, was because we didn't have like a map. Of where the route was and they've included. Something like that. Um. Do either. Rich or Lorraine? Have any comments on this?
No, I reviewed it. I can see the route. We have two, um, we have two officers, um, it's. Two key locations. Um. Uh, indicated by the. The chief.
Okay, since that time, I think the fire chief has signed off on it. Uh Lieutenant Joyce has provide, uh Captain Joyce, I guess, has provided an email. And they provided a clearer map. Um. Mr. Savis also requested a suggestion for a town charity to make a donation to. Um, so do we? All right. Um, well. Let's do this. Um, I'll entertain a motion to approve the request. To have Sunken Island Bike Race on July ten, twenty twenty-one, use the um. Lakeville Roads as the, on the route provided.
Right, oh. So moved.
I'll second that with discussion.
Yep, discussion.
The um, according to the uh. I had asked the question at the last meeting. That this is a double loop on the same um map.
Yep.
Okay. Um, I would assume, and I could be wrong. Based upon what's going on here, if it's a double loop, they're probably gonna have to have the um. The uh police details probably for eight hours. I I'm guessing, but I don't know, even though it does say eight thirty to, you know, ten thirty.
Yeah.
That's, you know, that's my guess and um. Did Tracy, do you know if the um Sean Joyce had answered that question or?
Uh, he had a conversation with Mr. Savis and they discussed the route. Um, and um he sent the email and um. I don't know if they specifically discussed the double route, but Mr. Savis's letter speaks to the double route, the revised letter, I should say.
Yeah.
Um, speaks to the double roof and he feels they'll be on the road from eight thirty to ten thirty. So um, I mean, I can ask.
No, I'm just curious because uh we don't want them um. Out there, you know, how many miles is this thing? Fourteen miles.
Yeah.
So um. Anyways, I'm just, I'm just bringing that up as a concern that if, you know, some people go faster than others, but whatever.
Yeah, I mean, you know, um Captain Joyce's email says, I have no issues with the proposed route as presented to me with the stipulations requiring the two Lakeville Police Details at the locations proposed by. So it sounds like he.
Okay.
Okay, all right. Um, okay, so all those in favor of the. Of the race?
Carboni I.
Camera I.
Fabian I, okay, as to a suggestion for a town charity to make a donation to, um.
Do we have an amount?
Do we have an amount? I don't see an amount.
It just said a portion.
Portion.
I'd like to know what the amount is, just as we get the amount from somewhere else. From the others.
Yeah. Okay, we can ask, can you reach out to them, Tracy, to ask them for the amount?
Yep.
And then we'll. Um, can you also, Tracy, just send us an email? At least it would be helpful for Lorraine to, to know what we've sent out or what we've asked. The charities. Because we did a couple at about a month ago at a meeting. Just for, I can't remember them all.
It was um five hundred, five hundred and five hundred, five hundred for the Community Gardens, five hundred for the Friends of the Lakeville COA, and five hundred for the Friends of the Lakeville Library. And that was for the um Patriot um half triathlon.
Okay. All right, okay. So then we'll look for. Um. Yeah, if you can get that and then we'll put that back on to discuss that.
Okay.
All right, um, so we have a request from the Aponequid Regional High School Class of twenty twenty-three to hold a car wash at the Town Office Building on June twelfth, twenty twenty-one, from nine AM to twelve PM. So this is submitted to us. Uh, contact person, Ashley Emery on Harlan Road. Um. Is is this new? Do they, do they do them there? I know the Boy Scouts do them there.
Yes, they they routinely hold car washes there.
Okay.
Yep.
Different classes, but.
Yeah. Okay.
I make a motion that we approve. Um. The request for the Apone- Aponequid Regional High School Class of. Wow. Twenty thousand twenty-three to hold a car wash at the Town Office Building on June twelfth, twenty twenty-one, from nine AM to twelve PM. Um, as long as uh we have the approval of the Board of Health, they have their input and um. The Fire Chief as to where. They hold it at the Town Hall.
Yep.
Madam Chair?
Yep.
Um, I spoke to the health agent and he said he was fine with it.
Okay.
Like he approved the Boy Scouts. He said, um, you know, he was fine.
Okay.
And the letter that goes to them, um, asks them to reach out to um the Fire Chief to um let him know that they're coming and and ask whether he would like it held.
Okay, all right, um. Any second? Rich, you don't want a second?
I'm sorry, I seconded, I did second that, I think. I already did.
All right, I didn't hear it. Okay, um, any other discussion? All those in favor?
Carboni I.
The camera I.
Fabian I, okay. So we have agenda item number seventeen. Um, to approve minutes. So.
Madam Chair, I make a motion to approve the selectmen's minutes of February twenty-second, two thousand twenty-one. March eighth, two thousand twenty-one. March tenth, two thousand twenty-one, March fifteenth, two thousand twenty-one, March twenty-second, two thousand twenty-one, and March twenty-ninth, two thousand twenty-one.
Okay, I'll step down his chair and I'll second that. Any discussion? All right, all those in favor, Fabian I.
The camera I.
Carboni abstains.
Okay. All right, that is. Okay, so agenda item number eighteen, discuss scheduling May and June meeting dates. So we need to schedule dates going forward. Right now, we have April twenty-sixth as the next meeting, correct?
Yes.
Um, so. I think um. We should probably do, in thinking about it again, I think we should probably do warrant review April twenty-sixth. So that leaves us um. May third after that. Town meeting is May tenth. Um, you'll see May twenty-fifth um for Lorraine and Rich. It's a Tuesday. Um, in speaking with Ari, our new town administrator, he has a conflict on the twenty-fourth and he's very. Um, apologetic and I said to him, we're only three people, we can try to rearrange our schedule. Um, so if that works for the two of you as a Tuesday, okay, that night?
Can I ask a question, Madam Chairman?
Yep.
Um. The twenty-sixth, are we having a meeting on the third for a reason?
Um, well, I had originally said we'd do the warrant review, but um.
So if we did it on the twenty-sixth.
Yep.
We have town meeting on the tenth. When we have our meeting on the seventeenth?
Um. The meet, the week after.
Town meeting.
Um, yeah, I mean, we could do that instead of having the extra week in between. I'm fine with that. You're all right with that, Lorraine? So we do April twenty-sixth. Um, five-ten. Five-seventeen, and then, I mean, if we do five-seventeen, then we don't even need five-twenty-five. But May thirty-first is Memorial Day.
Yeah, so um. Unless you want to stay around, if you want to, let's see, uh twenty. So we did the third, which is fine, you know, I'm not sure what we got, but if we did the third. Then we wouldn't do the meeting until the twenty-fifth, right? Which is.
Well, yeah, we would go from the tenth to the twenty-fifth. I don't, Lorraine, any, any?
Then the next one would be June seventh.
Yep.
All right.
And the only reason why we would need the third, if there was anything that the board needed to vote prior to town meeting, but if we get, if we. Manage to get all of our stuff done on the twenty-sixth, then we wouldn't necessarily need the third.
Yep. So the twenty-sixth, and then from the twenty-sixth is two weeks is town meeting.
And then the twenty-fifth.
Yeah, two weeks after that would be the twenty-fifth.
All right.
Yeah. Memorial Day is the thirty-first, right?
Correct.
The only bad thing about that is if we don't do like the seventeenth, then we would not have a meeting for one, two, three, four weeks.
Right.
It doesn't make a difference, do whatever you want.
No, I mean, it doesn't, you know, it doesn't make any difference to me. I'm, you know, after town meeting, there's still work to be done. Um. So we have four-twenty-six. I think Tracy and I put five-three in there just in case we needed to do anything. Um, before a town meeting.
Well, we could also, we could, we could do it if we had to.
Right, right.
So.
Yep, um, so I guess the question is, do we want one on the seventeenth or do we want? I'm trying to think because isn't that Ari's first day too?
Mm-hmm.
The seventeenth?
Yeah.
Um.
I say we do the twenty-fifth.
Yeah, I say the twenty-fifth. But.
That's that's four weeks, you know, we're not gonna be.
Right, so that's why we had put, I think, the third.
Okay, I'm I'm fine with the twenty-fifth, fine with me, it's okay with me. Okay.
But are we including, yeah, but are we including the third, though?
Uh, I don't think we are unless we need it.
Unless we need it.
Yep. So.
So we go with the twenty-fifth?
So we want. Twenty-sixth and the tenth, and then the twenty-fifth.
Okay. Um.
Then after that, June fourteen to twenty-eighth.
Yep.
And again, if we need something.
Yep. Um, I think we'll know if something comes up and we need to put a meeting in there. And again, you you know, I like to try to do our schedule a month or two, you know. I think we'll know if something comes up and we need to put a meeting in there. And again, you know, I like to try to do our schedule a month or two, you know, in advance, but you know, this always happens too with the Monday holiday, so the Monday holidays of the summer. So if we need to put in an extra meeting, then as long as we stay within the 48-hour posting, then we add an extra meeting. That's okay. All right.
And so what did you decide?
4/26.
That's already scheduled.
Yep, 5:10 is town meeting. 5:25. Um, then 6:14 and 6:28.
So the only regular meeting you're having in May is May 25th?
Mm-hmm, yeah, well, that's Rich's point.
I think that's gonna be that's gonna be hard.
Yep, well, you know what? We can add the 17th in if you guys want.
What about a Wednesday meeting? What about like May 12th, which would be two days after town meeting?
I, I don't think that's necessary, because
I don't think we need that.
How are we gonna get prepared, you know, for Wednesday meeting, the 12th?
I think if we need the 17th, then we just think about what happens at town meeting, and if we have a couple of days to decide before we have to post. If we have work piling up, which technically, you know, that's why we had put the 3rd in, just to knock out whatever comes in before town meeting. We can put the 3rd in, and if nothing comes in, we can cancel or not post it. Okay, 4/26, 5:10, town meeting, 5:25, 6:14, 6:28. Will be adjusted if we need it to be. That works for me. All right, next on the agenda is new business. Anyone have new business?
All set.
Lorraine, anything?
No, all set.
Um. One second, please. Okay, so no new business? Uh, old business? Um.
Madam Chair?
Yep.
Okay, the, the fiscal '22 budget is, is completed, and new budgets will be, will be distributed. I believe that the both of you have received those. If you're not, they'll be in your, be in your mailbox. So we're ready to go forward with the budget that, as presented. And the capital plan, the Capital Expenditure Committee met Thursday night and reviewed the plan with the department heads, and they approved the capital plan as, as presented. So both of those are ready to go ahead. And Tracy is in the process of upgrading the Finance Committee booklets for them with the new information. And then we're going to, over the next week, work on the motions to get those finalized, to get reviewed, and they will be discussed at the meeting on the warrant review on April 26th.
Okay. Um, so just in response to Lorraine's question last week asking for any updates, I did find one, and I forwarded that to you, right, Lorraine?
Which one?
Wasn't there one that I had said I had found that had come from Todd, the accountant?
We just, we just provided new updates, Leah.
Yeah, I think this one was back a few weeks ago, but anyways, so the updates are ready for everyone, Finance Committee and everybody, to be picked up.
They will be, yes.
Am I getting new pages from Todd? You said there was a problem with the formatting. Am I getting new pages, or am I still using the ones that?
No, the, we're gonna have to, because of the page breaks, we'll have to correct those. These are, we already have, we already have those, Tracy, we're all set. I got them, so.
So, oh, all right, so you're gonna get them to me so we can recomp?
Right.
Okay.
So does anybody have any questions on the budget or the capital plan?
I don't. I did.
Ari had a chance to take a look at it? Do you know, Leah?
Ari?
Yes.
Um, I'm not sure. I haven't discussed that with him.
He's, he's been copied on all the budgets all along.
So has anybody have, I've, I've had a brief conversation with him, just to meet him, but has, Leah, have you talked to Ari about?
Um. Our budget?
Yeah.
No.
Do you know?
Haven't.
Okay, well, we still, we still have some time, just.
No, we don't have time. We don't have time. We're out of time.
Yeah.
I would like to, I would, I mean, I'd certainly just, you know, I mean, not looking that he's gonna overhaul the budget. I'm not expecting that from him, Rich, but it would just be nice if, if we had a chance to just hear from him, that he had a chance to review it. Um.
He did, he's been involved all along. He spent time with Todd. He spent time with me reviewing all the budgets, and he doesn't have any questions.
Well, I don't know that.
Yeah.
Then go and ask.
I was just asking.
Yeah, most of my.
There's no changes now. We can't change it. We're at the 11th hour here.
Rich, I understand. I understand. I was just asking a question if Ari had a chance to look at this, that's all, and if he had any comments.
He has.
Yes.
He had comments.
And he had comments.
Yeah.
Okay, most of my conversations with him have been about scheduling and a few other things, but, okay. So is there any other old business that needs to come up? Okay. Um, any other business that can come before, properly to come before the meeting? Okay, well, if that's the case, then I will entertain a motion to go into executive session pursuant to Mass General Law, Chapter 30A, Section 21A5, to investigate charges of criminal misconduct or to consider the filing of criminal complaints and not to return to open session. Someone?
So moved.
Okay. All right, any discussion? All those in favor?
Roll call.
Roll call, all those in favor? Lorraine Carboni?
I.
Rich LaCamera?
I.
Leah Fabian, I. All right, and everyone has the.